Call to order this session of the Atwater City Council for May 22, 2017. At this time, if you'll please all rise for the pledge of allegiance to our flag of our wonderful nation, followed by invocation by Chaplain Mead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Krotick, you're up.
I think I'd call you. Clap your heads. Lord, we want to thank you for, and we want to ask you to bless the men and women on our dais who are going to make decisions for the rest of us tonight. We ask that you give them wisdom, ask that you be with them. And we also want to ask you, we want to thank you for all the good things in our lives. Many a time, we come to you when we're struggling, and when we need help, we need an uplift. But tonight, we also want to thank you for the good things in our lives. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Andy. Roll call, please. Creighton.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Viera.
Here.
Vineyard.
Present.
Price.
Here.
We have Quong. Mayor or city attorney report out from closed session. Mr. Turpster, please.
Yes, members of the council and public. Council did meet in closed session to discuss several items of potential litigation. On all of those items, staff was given some direction, but no reportable action was taken.
And then, we do have a subsequent need item, and that is, item number 15 on your agenda will be moved up to directly following the consent calendar. Number 15, for approval of amending of the agenda, entertain a motion. So moved. Second. Call for the question. Viera.
Yes.
Creighton.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Vineyard.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of agenda as posted or as amended? Other than item number 15, are there any other items for amending? Mr. Raymond.
Just under the ceremonial matters, Police Lieutenant Soria, it should be Soria.
Any other observations to amending?
Motion to approve.
Second. Call for the question. Viera.
Yes.
Creighton.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Vineyard.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ceremonial matters, presentation to City of Livingston Police Chief Chavez and Police Lieutenant Soria. One, two. Can we hear each other?
Get up there, Sam.
We're trying to get, can you?
Chief, get over there.
This is not, is, can you hear me on this?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, as you all know, our Chief Joseph went to the FBI Academy here back in February, January into February. Okay, how's that? In any case, we had, we had some, you know, backup to the chief while he was gone. And Chief Chavez and Lieutenant Soria was that backup, along with a whole bunch of other agencies who, you know, were there should we have needed them for some type of catastrophic event or what have you. And we wanted to recognize the chief and lieutenant this evening for helping us out in a time, you know, that wasn't real desperate. We, I don't think we had to call you for anything, did we?
For lunch.
Oh, one time for lunch. Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, who picked up that tab? In any case, we wanted to recognize them tonight and tell them how much we appreciate, you know, that support that we get from our other cities and agencies in certain times. And so, that's, that's what we're doing tonight. Chief Joseph?
Thank you, Mayor. Like the mayor was saying, again, with Chief Chavez is a dear friend, but also a person that came to the city of Atwater and without hesitation told me and his partner, Chris Soria, Lieutenant Soria, that they would come here and assist us while I was gone. And they did a great job. They kept it calm and peace. I had Sergeant Wisdom as an acting position, and they kept everything in stride and kept me in tune. I had phone calls, spoke to them periodically while I was there, and I deeply appreciate it and thank you guys for helping us out in the city of Atwater. Thank you.
So, to show our appreciation, Lieutenant Soria, for you this evening, signed to all as council members, certificate of appreciation, and to you, Chief, as well. Thank you both very, very much. We appreciate your assistance and help. Thank you very much. Well, again, Mayor, members of council, we are humbled and thankful that you guys recognize us, but we're here for law enforcement family throughout the county. Good thing you went in the winter, because in the summertime, it might be a different story. So, but anyways, I just want to thank you, and I also want to commend the staff. Sergeant Nibeski and Sergeant Wisdom did a great job, as well as the city manager McBride. And I know this because I'm currently the acting city manager in the city of Livingston. I've been there for about a month, and it'll be another into June, so I know how difficult the job can be. But Scott, you did a great job. Thank you so much for what you've done, and I appreciate all the support. And by all means, anything Atwater needs, we're here for you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Next presentation is presentation to Chris and George Morrow, Jim Briscoe Enterprises. When we were approved by the city council to open up the tow yard, we needed some help and assistance on it. And without hesitation, this young man came there, volunteered his time, his crew. How many crew members do you have?
My son.
It's your son. Your, your son came over, I was away at the time, you were doing a lot of the stuff, came there and did our floor plan pretty much for us, and did the entire, the tow yard's going to be all on the house in the city of Atwater. So, I want to thank you. You saved us a lot of money and time, and I appreciate your time, really do, what you did for the city and expedite things. Things are going to, should be opening up in the next couple of weeks, and because of you, probably helped out a lot. Thank you very much.
Anytime that somebody can step forward and help us out and do it at cost savings, that's a huge plus for us, I mean, any way you look at it. And I just want to add my personal thanks also for allowing your outfit to come in and do what you did to help us out to get this project done. It's one that's been going on for quite some time, and we're looking forward to its opening. And you played a very big part of it, and we appreciate it very deeply. Thank you.
It's up to you from the city of Atwater, signed all by the council.
At this time, comments from the public. Notice to the public, at this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until the item is read for consideration. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Are there any members that wish to speak to the council this evening? Please step forward to the podium, state your name for the record.
Do I stand here or here?
You're right there. That'll work.
Christine Hunwardson. And I apologize for the casual attire. I have somewhere else to be at 6:30.
Don't worry. She's on the crossfit.
I just, I, I wanted to tell you something that happened last night with my husband and I in Atwater. Went to Foster Freeze to get an ice cream, and when we were finished, we had to back out of the driveway and went, which direction?
North on.
North on Mitchell, and all of a sudden, we heard bam, bam, loud and hard, to the passenger side of the car. I was sitting there with my chihuahuas in my lap. First thing I did was duck. I knew, I knew it was a gun. I knew it was. I said, let's get out of here. So, we went to the Shell gas station, and of course, we didn't have our cell phone. She called the police. Officer De Silva responded quickly, professionally, with lots of compassion. He said possibly it was a slingshot, but I'm, I'm almost 65, and I know what a gun sounds like. And it, it was some sort of a gun. We only found one dent in the car last night, but when I went out to the car today, I saw another one in the door. So, people I've talked to today say, oh, that stuff happens everywhere. No, it doesn't. I know it doesn't. And if it did, it doesn't make it right. Does not make it right. And I don't know what the answer is. I know the police force is, I'm sure they're short of officers. I completely understand their hard work. I have a family member that works for Merced PD. I know what they go through, but somehow, somewhere, we've got to find funding or whatever it takes to, to have more officers protecting us. I mean, we should be able to go, you know, upstanding elderly citizens going to get an ice cream on a Sunday night. It, it was, it was traumatic, and, yeah, we're fine. But it still really, really shook me up. So, I think as a town, we need to all work together, and, because I think California's spiraling downward very quickly, and I'm afraid the valley is going to go right along with it. Not, not five minutes before that, we had had a conversation, because we're thinking about possibly Prescott, Arizona. And I told my husband, I said, well, I researched the crime, and in Prescott, Arizona, you have a one in 304 chance of being a victim of a crime. Atwater was one in 23. And an hour later, this happened. So, I just thought you guys would, would want to be aware, and it's, it's, it's happening to real, real people with no gang ties. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
Jeanie Knight, 3218 North Buick Road, Atwater. I want to talk about the ugliness in the city of Atwater. You know, these council people are up here, they ain't no money. They get drugged through the garbage for nothing. And I'm sick and tired of it. I want these people to come together and act like civil human beings instead of a bunch of jerks. I mean, there's no reason to, to talk about these people. If you all want a job up here, I'm sure one of them would be happy to let you run against them. I mean, come on, they're free. So, why do we drag them through the dirt? It's just ridiculous. And poor Scott, drug him through the dirt too. There's no reason for this. Can't you just all these people out here get together and just apologize and get over it? That's all I got to say about that.
Thank you, Jeanie.
You're welcome.
She warned me not to go first. Thanks, Jeanie.
Mr. Krotick.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. And it's the first time I've been here this year, but it was a good night for dinosaur and I to come out. Really, just want to come out and say thank you to Mr. Ferretta over there. I notice his beard's getting a little longer, so he must be getting real close. The citizens of Atwater have no idea what they're about to lose. I don't know what genius, and that's not a compliment, took him out of Parks and Rec and put him into Public Works. But my experience with Patrick, as he retires from the city of Atwater and leaves Atwater, and I wish he was going to be on a ballot someday here, is that when I was on the council for 12 years, this man did nothing but stand up for the youth and community. And whether it was, you know, getting the bathroom fixed at Memorial Park, you know, or getting more equipment for flag football, he was there on Saturdays early, he was there on Sundays late, he was there, you know, before his shift started and after. And I believe that there's a lot of parents today and grandparents who were his kids that went through, who are good model citizens because of him. And back in those days, the council was allowed to talk to department heads. In fact, you guys are allowed to, for purposes of inquiry. And I would go to Patrick and say, hey, what does your department need? Because we would do a budget where we actually went on a line item, not what you guys approved today. And he'd say, I needed this for the kids, not, and I'd say, you're driving that old white S10. I said, do you need a new truck? And he would say, no. And he drove that thing into the ground. I, I don't know if it's still running, but last I heard it was approaching 300,000 miles. But he, he was selfish, so I wanted to just say, congratulations, God bless you, and I know you're going to Montana. A windbreaker doesn't work there, by the way, so, but best luck to you. And I think we owe him a round for applause, and I think this council, honestly, if there was ever a person that deserved to have a park, or a building, or something named after him, it's that man over there. Okay, so I'll have a round of applause for him. Just one more, one more, how much time I got? Just, just a couple more things. Secondly, Mr. McBride, I understand you took yourself out of running for city manager. And I think Scott's career, like Patrick's, has been a long services community. And I would tell you, there would not be an Atwater industrial park, as Dennis will attest, without Scott. In 1995, Atwater used to have an airport, and it was his, his job to close that airport, secure a million dollar redevelopment grant, and the runway is still a road out there, but he, NCI was his baby. And so, you have a lot to be proud of, Scott, and what you've accomplished. I don't know what your future holds, but you have a lot to be proud of. Lastly, I would say, and Bob back there said I had to be nice, but I would just say that you, you guys have not had a city manager for a long time. This city has not had a city manager for a long time, I mean, years. We had someone who stepped in to try to hold, you know, the show, keep the lights on, as we've, the expression goes. But you guys have been looking for a city manager since I was 195 pounds, which is a long time ago. So, I would just implore you, hire someone, and get set on a, some stability. It's a non-election year, so you don't have to worry about your seats if someone doesn't like the selection. It's, it's time. So, I hope this endless thing, as far as I understand, you've been looking for one since last summer, and summer's upon us. So, good luck in your endeavors, Mayor, council. Thank you for your service. Like Jeanie said, it's, it's, sometimes it's thankless, and maybe the speakers after me will remind you of that. I think you're doing a great job with what the hand you've been dealt, but it is time, in my opinion, to hire someone. That's my mark. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Mr. Anderson returning to the scene of the crime.
Dennis Anderson, 3340 Harbor, Atwater. I got word about, a month and a half ago, that Patrick was retiring, so I did want to come before the council to, to express my appreciation for what Patrick has done over the years. I don't think it would be an exaggeration to say that there's been tens of thousands of children benefiting from what Patrick did in the Parks and Recreation Area while he was here, working for the city. I know my son participated in many programs, and it was an honor to work back in the mid 90s on the council with Patrick. And I just want to wish you well. I, I do understand you're heading north. You're going to have a lot of time on your hands, and perhaps you can, I don't know, volunteer. Maybe Parks and Rec. I think you've got the experience, and you would do a fantastic job. Patrick, thank you, and I appreciate the times that you worked for the city.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Robert Bendorf, and I'm the market development manager for the HERO program. I work with the city of Atwater, as well as a lot of other communities that are actually here in the Central Valley and Northern California. I'm really here for two reasons today. One, just to kind of provide you an update on how HERO is doing in the city of Atwater. I provided Dawn with a printout sheet of kind of how things are going, but then also to tell you how things have progressed in the recent years. If some of you may remember, the council of Atwater actually approved HERO back in mid-2014. And the city chose to do this to help homeowners make upgrades to their homes through a unique form of financing. And HERO has been such an asset to our 440 communities in California, because every year, one in six homeowners will replace a product that is, and in most cases, it's going to be not the most efficient unit for the home. And so, unfortunately, they're unable to make these long-term investments, and this is partially due to the lack of cash or high-interest credit cards. And so, HERO coming in to the city has given options for, for your constituents, and really, it's helped actually over 96,000 homeowners here in the state of California. And as you'll see from your sheet, the city of Atwater specifically, over 117 homeowners have actually chosen to use the program. You'll see on the picture there that there's different colored dots. Those actually represent orange for solar, blue for water, and then green for energy efficient, most likely HVAC, you know, things like that. But with 117, you're actually seeing over 230 projects that were actually completed. And if you look at the sum of the total amount invested, that comes out to about $9,200 a project for improvement. So, very quality products that we know of, because they have to meet certain standards, but also at a really good price for the homeowners as well. Now, some of the, the progressions that we've made through the years are actually through our interest rates when it comes to financing, because being that we're a new financing category, we're always working to bring down rates and the cost that is for the homeowners. Our current rate structure is actually around 5% now, whereas just even this time last year, it was actually over 6%. So, continually making it better in the way of cost for the homeowners. In addition to that, consumer safeguards that we're focusing on, although in 2014, when the council approved the program, there were a lot of strict qualifications that a homeowner had to meet, we've made additional improvements where we're actually having 100% confirmed terms calls with homeowners, follow-up phone calls with members that are over the age of 64, as well as providing homeowners with disclosures around amortization lists of how much the cost is actually going to be. And that all the while, as we're doing this, having an agreement with the contractor that we are not going to pay them until the homeowner says that the contractor has done everything that they promised. So, another just safeguard that's in place. One homeowner I wanted to share with you recently in the, in the springtime, just to kind of quote here, "Our roof was very old, had sprung a leak, and in dire need of replacement. Our windows, sliders, and roof were not energy efficient, which resulted in high utility bills. Thanks to the HERO program, we now have an energy-efficient roof and window, and look forward to seeing a significant reduction in our utility bills." Thank you, HERO program. And that's just, really, as a member of Atwater, I just really just want to share that story with you and kind of make myself available. I know I don't know too many of you personally, but please, I gave my information to Dawn, and please feel free to reach out. I can even give you access to this HERO gov program, so you can actually see more details than you actually see right here, where you can even see local contractors that are registered with the program, things like that. But thank you for your time, and, yeah, hope you have a great evening.
Thank you so much. Now, Greg, that's a pretty thick file, so I know it's only five minutes now.
Greg McDaniel, Codota Avenue, Atwater, California. I have the honor and privilege of being one of the few folks that run the Atwater Fourth of July every year. And I am one link in the chain that has existed since about 1959, we believe, since there's always different people in charge, it's hard to keep track of records and stuff. But it looks like in 59, it became organized and a group from the Women's Auxiliary from out on base, and a bunch of business guys from downtown got together and started this tradition that has morphed into a gigantic event. Atwater sees probably around 40,000 people from sunup to sundown, and, and it's just a fantastic mom-and-pop atmosphere. Anyway, tonight, I'd just like to take the time to invite everybody to come out this year. We'd like to invite all of the businesses to grab a booth, all the organizations, churches, anybody that, we've had people in the past rent a booth space and set a lawn chair there and a little table, and just sit there and watch people all day long. We will definitely accommodate you. We are already selling T-shirts for the Atwater Fourth of July to raise funds. Next weekend, we have a bus trip to Casino to raise funds. Our little cans are out in a lot of the shops around town, hoping to get some bucks that way. But the bulk of our income is from the generosity of people that have a little bit of money to spread around. And it's, it's a tough road to hoe. We, we go into the, every season, knowing that we're already way short of what we need. We'll end up needing about $40,000 this year to run everything. The fireworks show, when, when I hear that popping and cracking and the crowd oohing and ahhing, I'm looking up thinking that's $1,000 a minute. But it is more than worth it. To keep up the, the tradition of Independence Day in Atwater, it's important to us to keep it mom-and-pop, not, not so advertised and so corporate that it isn't what it's always been. And we really appreciate it. This year, the, the bands will be country western out there at the fireworks show. The fireworks show is, is fantastic. We, we know we get at least 10,000 people that show up out on the castle, and it's, it's great. I mean, it's, it's just fun to be part of, and every year, we, we come out about this time and start begging people for money. So, just kind of look for us. If you're, if you want to get applications for booths, or parade, or, or to donate, or just to find out what's happening, you can go to atwaterfourthofjuly.com, and we'll hook you up any way we possibly can. If you feel like volunteering, we can always use you, because 40,000 people is kind of, it's like keeping ants on a plate. We can use as many hands as we can. But I'd like to thank you and invite you out.
I think Mr. McDaniel is being less than genuine here. It's, he's not just one part of this committee that makes this happen each year. He is, Pinky are both the, the people. They are the nucleus of everything that makes this whole event happen. And anybody that comes to Atwater on Fourth of July, you're going to get from morning till, till the wee hours, almost of the evening, entertainment. And Greg, and- And Greg and his wife, Pinky, are, like I say, the nucleus that makes this all happen. And were it not for their efforts, I don't know how successful this would be. So, I personally want to thank you, Greg, for all that you do, and having joined on the committee almost three years ago now, I see what you go through, and it is horrific. It is a Herculean effort, to say the least, to put this event on, and people come from all over to do it and to enjoy it.
Thank you for your compliments. It really does take a bunch of people. The chairman of these committees usually get all the congratulations, and it really is a bunch of people in the background doing all the work. Usually, chairman means you're the guy cleaning the bathroom after it's all over. But we really appreciate it, and you've done a great job on that.
Well, thanks. I just want to say, you know, for people that don't, or who haven't experienced it, last year, our attendance at the fireworks, it was pretty well estimated that we had around 13,000 people out there, and it just seems to be growing each year. I think it was like 8,000 or 9,000 the year I came on, and it's just...
Yeah, it's grown every year. We started out with about 8,000 or 9,000, then we hit 10,000 for a year or two, and now it's above that.
Yeah. It's a big event out there, and the fireworks are fantastic. So, I just want to let, you know, the council know, I'm making a $100 contribution to the Fourth of July, and I hope that the council members will challenge you guys to match mine or exceed my donation, so. And anybody else?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, Greg.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, public. Frank Johnson, 608 13th Street, President of the N-AAP. I agree with a statement that was made during public comment about being a council member. I've been asked many times over the years to run for council. At that point, I picked up a new disability. I couldn't hear. They kept asking, "I couldn't hear." Needless to say, it's a job I wouldn't and don't want. It's a hard job, and every time I've come up, I've come up poking, jabbing at the council, at the mayor, city attorney, city manager. We all have a job to do. Running a city is no easy task. When I bring up certain issues, it's because they were brought to my attention. I was asked to come to Atwater four years ago. At that point, I myself became a victim. I was treated very negatively, maybe it was because of who I was with. I didn't receive a welcome. At that point, I decided I didn't want anything else to do with Atwater. I was, a couple years ago, asked to come back because of issues. Those issues opened Pandora's Box, and another one came up, and another one came up, and another one. I'm not going to stand here in two minutes and reiterate everything that I have brought to the attention of this council. It's a lot. Someone made a statement to me and said, "Frank, a lot of people break the law. It's just something that is out of control." I agree. The problem is, they didn't get caught. When you get caught breaking the law, jaywalking, speeding, you're cited, you're punished, you pay your ticket, but it doesn't go away. It stays on the books, and you're going to be punished. So it doesn't matter how you justify something. The city spent $75,000 just last year on solar panels. No explanation, no nothing. $200,000 to an employee who didn't work a day, a detective. These are issues that I have brought up six months ago and still have no answers. I will get answers. I'm not here to take away somebody's bread and butter, I'm here for accountability, for the actions, just like I would be held accountable for my actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Bob Callaway, P.O. Box 1355, Atwater, retired Chief of Police. I've got, oh, you already got me started. I've got two items for tonight. The first one is, I'd just like to call your attention, especially our council, is that we have had four new photographs put into our military history column on the website. I sent out emails here about a month or so ago, calling your attention to that. Hopefully, you had a chance to see the email. Talked to the CEO of the museum. They were very pleased with what the city is doing with the website and these new photos. They have approximately six more aircraft coming into our museum. One is supposedly a MiG-19 or 21, which is historically involved with our country, maybe in a negative way, but it's still going to be a historical thing. So I would request that you have a chance to look at this website. Number two, I want to talk a little bit about the Atwater Policy and Procedures Manual, which was last dated in 2008, and we talked about this at our first workshop. And I don't think the thing has been initiated yet or given to the council for approval, so I guess most of my address is going to be to Tom, our city attorney. And this particular policy and procedures manual was taken from the League of Cities. It was a model, a manual that was developed by the City of Monterey. It was adapted for the City of Atwater. We have an index that, it has general information, it has requisitions, purchase orders, requests for checks, competitive bid process, contracts, surplus supplies, equipment, property, travel reimbursement, and employee expenditure policy, city credit cards, authorization signatures, and appendixes A through G. It's, this document was sent to Tom's office back in probably, I would say, a year to a year and a half ago, when Frank Pedro was still city manager. It was given to the manager with the caveat that if there was any questions, modification errors found, you could address it by making a new appendix, or if it was a single-page error, you could have the thing typewritten and insert it back into the manual. If the thing is still sitting in the attorney's office, I would like to know at some point how much money the city has spent on the review of this document. For the life of me, I cannot believe that a manual such as this, that was approved by the city council and several of their attorneys over there, would much be different than what we want to have for our policy and procedures. The thing that got me involved in this thing was that when we had a audit by the California State Comptroller's Office, they came up with approximately eight listed paragraphs of deficiencies that we did not comply with. And it's interesting to note that these deficiencies and this manual dovetail into each other. If the manual is not approved by our city council, it's hard to fulfill what some of these other deficiencies are. So I would request that this document that Tom has be turned over to the city council for review, and possibly even some division within the city that does all this type of work. And then between this group, hopefully, we can find out why the year and a half delay that should have been done within, I think, 30 days at the very outside. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Did you want to speak?
Yeah, just to assure staff and the council that the Policies and Procedures Manual has been worked on. There have been staff meetings regarding this. I think maybe what we could do is bring back a report at the next meeting, and with the council's permission, we could even interface directly with Mr. Callaway and give him some update on where the, what the status of that is at this point.
Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing none, next agenda item, please.
Consent calendar. Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Are there any items on the consent calendar that a council member would like to remove for separate consideration? Mr. Raymond?
I'd just like to remove item six.
Item six, okay. Any other items for separate consideration by the council? Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member from the audience would like to remove for separate consideration? Okay, with the exception of item number six, entertain motion for approval?
Motion to approve for the admin with polling number six.
Second.
Motion is second. Call for the question.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number six.
Item number six. Waiving the second reading and adopting ordinance number CS-980, approving pre-zoning Z-17-01, and ordinance number CS-981, approving the Ferrari Ranch Development Agreement.
Mr. McBride?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council members, members of the public. So this is a follow-up to your last meeting. As you know, you took action on a variety of different entitlement pieces for the Ferrari project, and so these are on tonight because they require to have a second reading before they could be put into effect. And then technically, it still takes a 30-day period afterwards from tonight before they become codified. Still a lot of work to be done on the Ferrari project. We have filed what's called a notice of termination. That was done last week after the action, or the week of the action. We're still also working on a letter, as we were directed here, to kind of explain what the rights and responsibilities are for the property owners in the city, and so we have some drafts. We're working on that, getting the city attorney to review it. Next steps would be, obviously, getting the LAFCO application put together, and we're going to be reviewing that this week and making great strides to get it completed. And again, processes moving forward, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, basically, all I really had was, I wanted to confirm what was said last meeting, that the different details will be coming back to the council, such as like the width of the sidewalks, open air areas, financing mechanisms, that we will still have the ability to work on that at a later date.
Yeah, in no ways were your actions, the final approval steps for everything, there are going to be multiple processes, multiple applications, and you'll be very involved with all those things. This was done at like a master plan level, and we still have further level detail before anything specific goes into development, so you're correct on all those points.
Okay, and I also just want to make sure that for the local property owners over there, that the letter you mentioned will be securing their property rights, as is, moving forward. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is that satisfy you for what you're...
Yep, I'm good.
Okay.
Motion to approve item six.
Okay. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Call for the question.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Does anybody else smell something burning?
I feel like the heater's on.
Can you check that, Jim? Last thing we need tonight is a heater on, I think. If Mr. Robinson could fan a little bit harder for everybody in the room. It's easy for you to say. Yeah, okay, next item.
Item which used to be number 15, reports and presentation from staff. Resolution authorizing refunding 2008, 2010, and 2011 wastewater bonds, approving consulting services agreement with A.M. Petchi and Associates LLC, bond counsel services agreement with Nosman LLP, and underwriter agreement with Hilltop Securities Incorporated relating to refinancing of the city's wastewater bonds.
Mr. McBride?
Thank you again, Mayor, Council members, members of the public. Happy to have some folks here tonight to speak on this item. We have Albert Pechet and Todd Smith. Albert Pechet has been a financial advisor, involved with the city on several of our debt projects over the years. Todd has been involved with some of the more recent ones, and they're going to outline tonight a proposed action that would allow us to provide for cash savings for the repayment of the wastewater bond. As you know, in our financial or fiscal workshops, we talked about this item, and Albert has some information that's important that he wants to share tonight. And again, I wanted to reiterate that tonight allows us to set the process forward. This is not the final process, the final step in all this, but tonight is the beginning of it, and he'll explain the details and what the process is, but I wanted to make sure you're aware of who these gentlemen were here tonight.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the Atwater community. My name is Albert Pechet. My firm name is A.M. Pechet and Associates LLC. And this is Todd Smith with Hilltop Securities. So we're here tonight to talk about refinancing opportunities for the wastewater bonds. I gave this presentation back on March 28th at a city workshop, where some of you attended, and they were also members of the community there, and there's, this is a, we're going to go ahead and go over some of those issues that we talked about, but they're actually greater refinancing issues than were back in March 28th. So the city has three, I'm not going to, some of this we discussed, and some of this gets discussed later on, but basically, the city has three outstanding wastewater bond issues. A series 2008, which the repayment, the last payment date is going to be made first of 2038. However, those bonds cannot be called until early next year.
Mr. Pechet, if you could hold your comments for a moment. We're having issues with this AC outfit here. Something is going on here with it. I want to take a short recess to address that and have you come back.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.[550.66]
And pay lower debt service. That's really important. A little more detail on the bonds. What would I like to talk about on this page? The Series 2008 Bonds refinanced about 10.2 million of the prior 2003 bonds, and it also provided 10 million in new money for the wastewater, the new wastewater treatment plant. It also had a debt service reserve fund of 1.3 million dollars. What is a debt service reserve fund? For any bond issue, it's typically three tests. Either 10% of the par amount of the bonds, average annual debt service, or maximum annual, maximum annual debt service. Thank you, Todd. Typically, so what is that for? That's for the investors. So that gets held in a reserve fund, and that goes to typically make the last payment. So those three tests, like I said, you have a 1.3 million dollar reserve fund. That's your money. That goes to make the last payment. Series 2010 Bonds, 48.2 million of that went for the treatment plant. It funded a reserve fund of 4.3 million dollars. It's currently valued at about 4.31 million dollars, just a little bit less. The Series 2011 Bonds provided 9.4 million, but in this particular case, we bought a debt service reserve fund surety. So the city paid a little bit of money, but instead of having a cash funded reserve fund of about a million dollars roughly, it was able to purchase this surety, providing for less bonds outstanding essentially. So the 2017 refunding bonds can refinance the 2010 and the 2011 bonds right now. And this is very important, without extending the maturity on those bonds. So they'll keep the same maturity of May 1st of 2045. They're going to be sold, should the council decide to move forward, to investors through an official statement that has a lot of information on the city and on the wastewater enterprise itself. The city would have to apply for a new S and P rating, but given that it most recently received a triple B minus, we feel there's very little credit risk at this point. The 2017 refunding bonds would have to get bond insurance, again, from Assured Guaranty. There's going to be no savings by trying to issue a triple B minus issue. And also, you'd have to have fully funded reserve funds for the entire issue, which I would estimate to be about five to six million dollars. Again, that's your money. It goes back to make the last payment, but that's going to be years down in the future. So the 2017 refunding bonds would also be issued on parity with the 2008 bonds. And the 2008 bonds can be refinanced in early 2018, probably around February 1st, somewhere after that. So analysis will have to be done, but at this point, there probably would be savings if we were to be able to refinance those bonds. We can't refinance them now for tax purposes. There's a lot of information on this page. I'm just going to kind of jump down, and you'll see these numbers. And it'll be clearer. Todd's going to talk about the second bullet point. But there's also an exhibit to the staff report on the remaining debt service schedule. What I'd like to talk about, there's going to be a net present value savings analysis. And the government finance officers say that between, you want to have at least 3% to 5% for an economic refunding, and this meets the criteria for that. So we have savings in excess of that, and you'll actually be able to see the savings on the next page. So the question is going to be, can we lower rates to our ratepayers? And the answer is, we think so, but you're going to have to have a new rate study performed by Ref Telus. And that rate study is going to take into account your capital needs. It's going to have to take into account projections, both on the revenue side by lowering rates and on the expense side, because your expenses typically continue to grow on any enterprise. And then they'll take into account the new lower debt service. So after that rate study, they'll be able to guide you as to whether and how much you can lower rates by. So I'm going to let Todd talk about this savings page, and I'll be the human pointer to point things out.
Great. Thanks, Albert. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council and the City of Atwater. My name's Todd Smith with Hilltop Securities, and I've had the opportunity to work with the city in the past on your 2011 wastewater bonds and a few other issues. But what we wanted to really kind of focus on this slide is really just the savings aspect, and really, what are we doing here? You know, if you liken this to your home mortgage, we're simply taking advantage of lower interest rates. So we're taking a higher interest rate, refunding to a lower interest rate, and thereby creating savings. Again, we're not extending the maturity to lower the payment. We're keeping the maturity dates the same, which is the key here. So this is just pure economic savings, what we would traditionally call a high to low savings analysis. And from the savings perspective, what you're looking at is your prior debt service, which is the second column over. And the third column over is your refunding debt service. And then your resulting savings, which is, again, these are all estimated numbers right now based upon today's market. But again, looking at that analysis, you're looking at approximately about $450,000 to $460,000 a year in savings that will run through this transaction, assuming that rates hold in. And, but what is, what's important here, just to maybe put this in a little better mindset, is mathematically, is your Series 2010 Bonds are at an average rate, interest rate of about a little over 5%, and you're going to go to about an average interest rate of about 4% to give you the sort of differential in interest rates. And then your 2011 Bonds are sitting right now currently at an average interest rate of about 6%, and you'll go to an average interest rate of about 4%. And that's effectively what's creating the savings for you here in this slide. Any questions on this? I think you, pretty self-explanatory. But the, again, the very far right column is simply just showing the net present value calculation that Mr. Pichet just spoke about. And that is that, again, generally speaking, the market acceptance with the GFOA and recommendations is that anything above 3% net present value savings makes sense to do an economic refunding. And again, we're showing right now that we're exceeding 5%, so we're well within the money, you know, from that test. This is simply just a graph of the prior page. We're just showing you what your prior, your current debt service looks like and what the refunding debt service structure would look like. And obviously, the gap between the red and the, I mean, the green and the blue line is the savings achieved. And again, you can see that the final maturity dates have not, you know, we haven't changed anything here. Albert?
Just very quickly, I'll do this very quickly, some background on my firm. My firm started in existence in 1996, so it's 21 years in business, and I'm a municipal advisor. I'm regulated by the SEC, and I have a fiduciary responsibility to the city and all my other clients. Most recently, we did the same financing for the City of Livingston. However, their bond issue was only about $7 million, and so they saved about a million dollars. So I did speak with Chief Chavez, because he was at that presentation, back in August and in October. With that, I'll just let Todd talk about his firm, then I have a few other things I'd like to bring up.
Great, thanks. So Hilltop Securities, we've gone through, I've been with the same firm since 2005, but we've changed names a few times. We were formerly ML Stern, and ML Stern has done work here with the city back in the past as well. And then in 2008, we were acquired by Southwest Securities. And then in 2016, we were formally merged with, we were acquired by Hilltop Holdings and formally merged with First Southwest Company, and so now we're just a bigger company with more resources. And, but we still maintain a lot of what really has been special to California, and that is that, you know, we've got 100 retail brokers up and down the state with offices up and down the state that sell municipal bonds, sell your city's bonds. We're large investors in our retail and the city's bonds, both historically and currently. And, you know, that's something that we bring to the table that most firms don't offer as well. And so we, again, we, you know, have recent experience with the City of Atwater, with Livingston, the City of Firebake, Keyes Community Services District, et cetera. I mean, we're pretty active here in California. My office, I think we completed 83 transactions last year up and down the state. So we're pretty active in the market. And then I think, since Albert Reyes is not here tonight with Nossaman, I'll just talk a little bit about bond counsel. But Nossaman is, you know, one of the top bond councils in the United States. Albert Reyes will be representing, assuming that the city is comfortable moving forward, providing both bond and disclosure council services to the city for these issues. Again, Albert's got a wonderful resume. He's a great attorney. Nossaman is a great group to work with. And again, Albert's got local experience, and certainly, we can provide references to the extent that anyone, you know, needs any of that information. Again, but Albert Reyes and Nossaman will provide all of the legal documents, which will secure the bond issue, as well as the offering statement that the city, that we will use for purposes of getting out to the public for investors to make their investment decisions on the bonds. I think that's it. Give me one more.
Thank you, Todd. So what are the next steps? So upon approval of the financing team, and by the way, I should say, right off the top, the financing team works on a contingent basis. So if there's no bond issue, if rates go up and there's no savings, then there's no payment to us. So we are only compensated upon the successful sale of a bond issue and from the bond issue itself. So it's not payable from the general fund. The other thing I'd like to mention is all the savings are net of all the cost of issuance. So we have an estimated cost of issuance, which we've cut down significantly from the prior two bond issues. And all the savings that you've seen are based off of current interest rates, but are net of the cost of issuance, and that's important to note. I think the only thing that you would have to pay for, there's going to be some projections that are going to have to go into the official statement and for the rating agencies. And I think that that would be done by Ref Telus. That makes sense, since they're your rate consultant. Those would probably cost about 15,000, and because they are projections, the SEC does not allow them to be paid on a contingent basis. So assuming the bond issue closes, they'll be paid from the cost of issuance, but if rates were to go up, they would still have to be compensated. But that's a minimal amount, and that would be payable from the wastewater enterprise itself. And that probably, depending where we are in the process, that could potentially be applied to a rate study. See about that. So once you approve them, we're going to start working on the documentation. We're going to start working on the official statement. And then the legal documentation will be brought back. It'll be probably a supplemental indenture and some other information we brought back to the council for approval, probably in about, about two months, I would say, six weeks to two months. And the council will approve those documents, and then we could move forward with the sale of the bonds, and then the closing of the issue would probably be in about three months. So it takes a while to get these issues up and running. We're going to work as quickly as possible, because the biggest danger to any refinancing, as you probably know, is that interest rates go up. So we're going to try to move as quickly and as prudently as possible to bring back information and legal documentation for your approval, and then Albert Reyes will be here at that meeting. And that's pretty much it. So we're glad to answer any questions.
So, okay, I was just going to ask, the rate that we would get, is that a fixed rate?
That's a fixed rate.
Okay.
And it's locked in at the time of the bond sale.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay. And you're saying that we wouldn't start to see the savings until January of 18? Is that correct? You were saying there was a tax consideration?
No. So on these, on these issues, you would start seeing savings immediately.
Okay.
This is the, if I can just do it quickly. This is your true savings page, if we were to sell bonds when these rates were put together. It was a 2008 bonds that are not included in this analysis. They cannot be refinanced until next year. So we would, for tax purposes. So we'll come back to you at that point with another financing plan, assuming rates stay low.
Gotcha. Okay. Mr. Vineyard?
Yeah, you answered one of my questions. So on the 2008, now, would that get extended out to 2045, like these two, or does that stay 2038?
No. Yeah. Well, we would do is, assuming rates stay low, probably come back in the fall to do the analysis and do the same analysis for you, but they would have the same maturity, 2038. We're hoping that rates stay low, and those can be refinanced. But they included a prior refinancing of two prior bond issues, and because of complex tax purposes, they can't be refinanced until 90 days prior to May 1st. But we've looked at that. If we could, we would include that, but we legally can't.
It would make sense to me.
Yeah, thank you. So approval tonight, do you tomorrow start looking?
We've actually started gathering some information. We have a head start, because we just did the S and P review. Yes, to answer your question, we can, we'll probably have a conference call tomorrow, Tuesday, no later than Wednesday, to go ahead and plan a schedule and get documentation up and running, and then get information over the city. We did visit the plant this afternoon, and we did speak with the plant manager. He gave us a nice tour of the plant, and we learned a lot about the plant that we didn't know about in terms of your capacity and the ability to add additional capacity, which is very important.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions from the council? Anyone from the audience have any questions or comments for Mr. Pichet? Okay. With that, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the question.
Vera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
You're off and running, man.
Thank you, Mayor Price. And thank you also for moving us up on the schedule. He's got a flight to catch. And we will have a call, and then we'll be in touch with staff.
Thank you.
And we will be back in about two months.
Yeah, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Physicians and Communications, request to hold seamless summer feeding program for summer 2017. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Ludwig, and I am the Food Service Supervisor for Atwater Elementary School District. I'm here this evening to just request your permission to be able to provide a seamless summer feeding program in the community at the Three Parks, Roston, Heller, and now this year will be at Veterans Park. This program allows any children within the community, 18 and under, to come and get a free meal during the summer months. And as you know, schools out, we only host one summer school program, which is at Schaefer. And so during that time period, we have a lot of students and children in our community who don't get a nutritious meal. So with this program, it allows us to continue to provide meals to our students in the community so that we know that they're still eating. And so I'm here this evening to ask just your permission to see if we can be out at your parks.
Okay. Mr. Creighton, you have a question?
I had a question. So if you could explain this every day or on?
Well, we're in luck this year. So, and we actually had a change to the program, because now that we'll be at Veterans Park, we've extended, we're going to be starting on June 8th, and we'll be out there until July 28th, Monday through Friday. And so in the flyer, and I brought one to share with you, I want to take a look at, and we're there during certain serving times so that students and parents are aware that we're going to be out at the parks. And we're out there about 45 minutes, so you'd be surprised the amount of kids that we can actually get out there at the parks. And that's usually where they are during summer. So we pretty much have a set schedule, and I have staff who actually go out to those parks and serve them.
Okay, that was my next question, was why you chose the parks versus a school location, since the school would be closer proximity to?
For us, we've seen more, because our summer school's hosted at Schaefer. So we have all of our students who come from summer school, and we reach out to the parents who come to pick up their kids. But it seems that kids are at parks during summer, not so much on the school grounds. And so we've had really good success at Heller. We've been out there. We served almost 100 kids just last year at that park. And last year was our first time we were at Roston. We served probably about an average of 75 to 80 kids out there.
And then did you have any issues at the parks with?
Surprisingly, no. The only issue we have is you just have adults in your community who are hungry too. But, you know, one of our biggest goals is that we want to be able to reach out to the kids during the summer months and continue to provide to them. Any other questions?
If you are using Veterans Park, are you also asking in your request for the use of the pavilion inside?
So what it is, is Sandy, who's not here this evening, and I have been having conversations about, what we're going to be doing is providing meals for the drop-in program that they have there. And they have an enrollment of 180 kids who come in just for drop-in. And then outside of that, we're also going to extend out to any other children who happen to be in that park, who are not part of that program. We're wanting to reach out to also them there. So she said it would actually be utilizing the pavilion, but it will be her staff who will be serving those kids.
I, yeah, I get that part, but I'm saying, inside, are you going to need to be in the inside kitchen area and that type of thing?
I haven't been to the facility yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I'm working with her on it. We're supposed to be doing a site visit of it tomorrow, because usually everything we're sending is going to be packed in ice coolers and everything else. So our goal would be not to utilize it, but if for her purposes and with her staff and stuff, that's what past practice was, was using the pavilion, so we'll, they'll probably continue to do that.
So that would raise the question of cleaning and trash?
That would be falling on her half. So that's something her and I can have a discussion about and coordinate.
Okay.
It's usually everything comes pre-packed. There's really nothing you have to worry about cleaning and stuff of that. Everything's already a pre-packed items that kids need to grab and go type of lunch. So I don't see too much cleaning. Most of it will be coming back to my facility to be cleaned.
I got you. Okay. Any other questions by the council?
Yeah, I just got a comment, because my daughter used to work at drop-in for several years. And just in reference to keeping that, the staff at drop-in, they go out there and they clean that every day. They mop, they wipe tables off. And since they're going to do the majority of the feeding, I would presume that would just fall into that same role. So, and they didn't ever did use the kitchen that I was aware of.
Okay.
But I did pay visits several times out there to partake.
Perfect. Okay.
Motion to approve. Second. Raymond, second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Call for the question.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
You're welcome.
Next item, request to hold blessing our city community outreach event.
Is there somebody here representing? Okay. Mr. McBride, do you have info?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmembers, I can tell you that this item did come before the Community Development and Resource Commission recently. Nice discussion about it. The applicant person here, I don't see them tonight. The commission did recommend that it be forwarded for consideration and approval. And they will be using some amplified or live music, and so we will be having the police work with them. But the event was to be during the daytime. Didn't seem to be much of an issue, and hopefully, that can help you.
Yeah. I was also in attendance at the CDRC when this was brought up. And I just want to ensure that, you know, this is a residential area, that any entertainment, whether it's live or if it's recorded, please be cognizant of the fact that it is in a neighborhood, and we don't want to have any complaints within that area. So, otherwise. Mr. Raymond?
Motion to approve. The item is posted.
Second.
Anybody else in the audience have any comments to this item? Seeing none, call for the question.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Funding and budget matters. Treasurers' report for the month of April 2017.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is April, Treasurers' report. I might mention the Atwater Redevelopment Agency's bond payments were, will be sent out at the end of the week, which is 841,095.63. Also, we have received property tax checks from the county totaling 988,002017.
Are those reflected in this report, or are they going to be added to it?
This is May.
No.
Oh, okay, so it hasn't been added in as of yet?
Next month.
Next month, okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. Heller? Comments?
Mr. Heller, just so the audience might be aware of, because they're not seeing this, we had a 3.3 and a half million dollar payment out of the sewer fund. That was for the bond, correct?
Yes, that was last month.
Yes.
24th of April.
Thank you.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Call for a question.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, verbal report regarding proposed budget for fiscal year 2017-18.
Lequinder?
Good evening, Mayor and municipal members. Could I just go over kind of the whole city budget, just overview? We will have the budget document ready for you this week. Then we will try to have workshops on the 30th and 31st of this May. So the whole, basically, the whole budget for the city is 45 million dollars in revenues, and expenditures are 44, 48 million. This includes 23 different funds. So General Fund, proposed budget is 13.45 million. For the General Fund history, just to kind of give you a clear picture where we have been and where we stand right now. So as you can see, blue line is the revenue line, and red line is for expenditures. Our revenue and expenditures are?
Thank you. Our revenue and expenditures are pretty much same dot. So that shows that we do not have a huge surplus every year, or projected surplus every year. So for current fiscal year, we only have a surplus of about $31,000. And for the next fiscal year, proposed budget, we have a surplus of $37,000 only. So where have we been? So we did lower employee salaries. As you all know, we had furlough going on since 2012. But this next year's budget did include furlough cost, which means we will be, we are proposing to be open five days a week. And that cost is basically being covered from enterprise funds. We did layoffs, about 30, 40% workforce was laid off back in 2012. We are monitoring our operating costs very closely, so they were reduced significantly. And we are continuously monitoring those, so that way we don't go over budget. As I mentioned, so we reduced our staffing 38% from fiscal year 2009 to 2017 and 18 fiscal year. This is the fund balance we have for General Fund. So that dotted line would be our kind of minimum reserve, if you say. But as you can see, we are way below that line. So right now, end of fiscal year 15, 16, we have a fund balance of negative $2.8 million. And for the current fiscal year, that goes down to about $2.6 million. And in next fiscal year, we are projecting to be very close to $2.6 million, since we don't have a huge surplus, which can go towards this deficit. So General Fund does include all these different departments. This is revenue by source. As you can see, 39% of the revenue comes from property and sales tax only. And then we have other revenue, like 4% intergovernmental. That's the, basically, allocations we are doing to other funds, like enterprise funds and all the other major funds, which is covering about 24%. For General Fund revenue assumptions, we are assuming there would be a 3% assessed value increase for property taxes. And there would be 3% increase in sales tax, which comes from muni services projections. General Fund revenue, this current fiscal year, we have about 12.8 million in General Fund for revenue. Then for next fiscal year, we are... about $12.8 million in General Fund for revenue. Then, for next fiscal year, we are proposing or projecting our revenue to be $13.5 million. And I need to point this out, the change is mainly, we are allocating more cost to the enterprise funds, because if we have to cover, just from the General Fund, we would not balance to cover our furlough, to get rid of our furlough, and to cover kind of two positions, city managers and one other department head position. So, this year, we are increasing our allocations to enterprise funds comparing to last year. For expenditure side, this is all the different departments. So, 65% of expenditures are basically safety-related, public safety costs, which includes police and fire. So, this year, we, we are including one city manager's position along with Community Development Director, since Ms. Scott went doing this kind of interim city manager job and his previous job since January. So, but going forward, we are going to budget two positions in General Fund. These are expenditures by each department. Then, we do have an inter-fund loan from sewer to General Fund. We will be making that payment this year. So, that $190,000, that's just the principal portion of that third payment. There's about close to $7,000 in interest, which is included in a non-departmental department already, so I did not want to count that twice. So, General Fund budget, revenue is about $13.5 million, and expenditures are $13.4. So, we have operating surplus of close to $40,000. Other funds for water enterprise, we are projecting revenue to be $4.2 million, expenditures are $4.1. For sewer, we are projecting revenue to be $13 million, and expenditures are $10.7 million. For sanitation, revenue projected to be $4.1, expenditures are $3.5. These are all the other small funds. As you can see, for gas tax, we are projecting operating expenditures would be $1.7 million, and for major, it is about $2 million. Employee benefits fund, six point, I mean, sorry, $672,000. Then, these are basically internal funds, so these costs does get allocated to all the funds based on their needs. For capital improvement programs, we are projecting in the next fiscal year, there are, there is a list of CIP projects, which is kind of totaling to $3.5 million for the first year. Challenges ahead, we need to identify additional general fund cost savings measures. Then, as we all kind of are aware, that CALPA is increasing their cost up to 30% in the next five years, so we have to have some savings or come up with more revenue so we can cover that payment. We are transferring furlough cost from the enterprise funds, so we do have to look into that from the legal aspect, if we can justify that cost. Due to staffing reduction, of course, the effectiveness is going down, and employees are worn out with all the work they have. We have to ensure that enterprise funds are self-sustaining, and we have to work on our long-term fiscal sustainability. This was the auditor's opinion. Even last fiscal year, they issued a going, going concern opinion, and they will continue with this opinion until we have that deficit in the General Fund. And the next step would be, we will conduct a public hearing on June 12, City Council meeting. Then, hopefully we will adopt next year's budget on that day. Then appropriations limit, that is calculated after the budget is adopted. Any questions or comments?
Any questions or comments for Mr.?
One observation that I made here is, is that, and I don't know how you will get these numbers, but there's funds distributed in August, I believe, for Measure V. Do you have any?
Yes, that is included in the budget document, but since we don't have those numbers here, I didn't include in the presentation.
Are you, are you going to have that in a separate line item?
Yes, it would be as a separate fund.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, one thing I wanted to, previously, I did provide the council kind of a summary of different funding sources for road maintenance and road repairs, and so it's actually been an item that we've been putting some effort into, which includes Measure V, the SB1 dollars and other resources. So, we have a pretty comprehensive idea, and I'd be happy to share that with you separate. But we are going to include those revenues into the budget for, for projects, so we're on that one, and it's going to be included.
The only thing, the SB1 distribution, I mean, do we have a schedule for that?
We do.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anything from the audience tonight? Questions or comments for budgetary matters? Interim City Managers Reports, Verbal Update Regarding Commercial Marijuana Ordinance.
Mayor, councilmembers, recently, we had draft ordinance here for some input, and we took it forward to the CDRC for first public hearing for the proposed ordinance. We decided, working with the commission, that it was in the best interest to continue it, or basically re-advertise for another, another date, so we're looking to put that on their, their commission meeting scheduled for June. We had several people that came and spoke during the meeting about the issue of dispensaries. They're vocal about the feeling that there's a need for it in the community. Also got some feedback since the meeting from some of the, some of the commission members about some details of the ordinance. So, we're going to be reviewing some of those and working with the city attorney's office. You know, in a way, it was a good pause. The commission had a chance to review it. They felt that they needed some more time, and we understand that. We want to make sure that everyone has the, the time to make a very good informed decision about this, even though they're a recommending body only to you, and you're the actual approving body. We want to make sure that they have the best input and the best opportunity to make a fair representation of the proposed ordinance. And so, with that in mind, you know, again, we're looking to have it to the commission later in, in June at the next meeting, and then we would start back with the, with the city council. Takes a couple different opportunities to come to you, different hearings, and then that, from that point, it would go forward. So, we just wanted to kind of back up and give you a sense of where we were. And then tonight, if you've got any other questions or input, it's a good time to provide those to us. And Mayor, I believe some people are here tonight that want to speak on this item as well.
I understand. And council, do you have any questions or comments pertaining to this? Okay. Sean, do you have comments? Does anyone in the audience have any comments to make to this? Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name's Zach Travan. I'm an attorney. For the last year, I've been exclusively engaged in local policy reform advocacy and consulting in the cannabis industry. And for any of those who may have been in attendance at the previous CDRC meeting, I apologize for being repetitive. I shared these comments there, but I'd like to share them again for the purposes of this discussion, and again, I appreciate your time. I believe the main priorities to focus on in the establishment of any commercial cannabis ordinance are reasonably straightforward and not mutually exclusive of one another. And those are, number one, establishing reasonable regulations to protect the health and safety of the general public, whether they be affiliated with or customers of these businesses. This is paramount above all else. And two, creating a, a local regulatory structure and licensing, which fosters an environment that will allow these businesses and the city itself to thrive. Accordingly, I would submit the following recommendations for the amendment of the current draft ordinance, and they are, number one, allowing vertically integrated dispensaries to operate alongside other industrial uses. This would serve a benefit to both the city and prospective operators in several respects. Allowing this use in Atwater would make establishment of local businesses more attractive, because it allows cultivators and manufacturers to directly serve the local consumer market, a consumer market that already exists and is being serviced either from other jurisdictions or from the black market. By prohibiting dispensary operations, the city is leaving potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars of tax revenue on the table by sending local consumers to nearby jurisdictions to spend their money. And I can assure you that adjacent jurisdictions, Stanislaus County, Modesto, the city of Merced, are all taking up this issue and looking to ultimately regulate the commercial cannabis industry. Moreover, the city would be leaving an open space for the black market to continue to operate. Allowing this type of use would benefit the city itself by creating a competitive advantage against nearby jurisdictions opening up to investment from this industry by virtue of creating this attractive and potentially lucrative licensing structure. The city would also be giving prospective operators a leg up as they establish themselves and begin to compete for market share across the region, and ultimately compete for market share statewide. To address some of the city's concerns, the city's expressed concerns regarding the potential negative impact of allowing dispensary operations are valid and well-placed. However, existing regulatory proposals, both in the local draft ordinance and from the state, create significant measures to prevent security threats and nuisances to nearby business owners. Some of those local measures include restricting the dispensary operations to the industrial zones and business park overlays, and requiring them to be part and parcel of the industrial operations. This would serve to maintain the quality and character of the city's general commercial areas, and given the recent legalization of cannabis and varying opinions on the issue, serve as a buffer to potential negative public opinions on there. Operators would still be required to meet zoning requirements as it relates to parking, traffic flow, and maintaining the premises as to prevent disturbances to nearby businesses. No signage indicating marijuana operations are ongoing, nor would any onsite consumption be allowed. Also, limiting dispensary operations to no more than 25 of the business's floor space as proposed would serve to appropriately limit the volume of commerce in these areas. I can assure you that adequate security with reasonable regulation can be accomplished and codified into this ordinance. Most importantly, the proposed security requirements for these businesses are such that their implementation would make the areas in which they operate safer. These include interior and exterior camera systems that would be, have to be approved by and accessible to the chief of police, as well as 24-hour private security patrols. Another idea, you know, that you could propose is having an armed guard stationed at the front of these premises to deter any additional security threats. In addition to the requirements that have already been placed into the draft ordinance, operators are likely to bolster their own security, as they have every incentive to create a safe environment for their customers and remain in good standing with the city and their neighbors. These may include, I already mentioned them, having armed guards stationed at the interest, at the entrance, and having an onsite security manager monitoring surveillance from within the interior of the premises. Again, there's going to be 100% transparency and, and when necessary, collaboration between the operators and local law enforcement. With this new licensing and commercial structure, now operators are incentivized to make sure that their door is open for law enforcement, and they can actually pick up the phone whenever there's an issue. Some of the state regulations include restricting dispensary access to only customers, employees, and product vendors. Beyond these general restrictions, the businesses must designate limited access areas where only employees are allowed. This means if you're not doing business on premises, you're not welcome. For the sake of maintaining compliance and creating a welcoming environment for customers, operators are incentivized to prevent loitering and nuisances in and around the premises. So, that's my recommendation as to including vertically integrated dispensary operations. Not only do I think it's a wise decision as, as far as maximizing the amount of revenue that you stand to collect from this industry, I also think it's a wise policy decision, because cannabis is legal, your local consumer base is there. Right now, they're relegated to obtaining the product from the black market, and those products are not required to be lab-tested for potency, for contaminants, pesticides. These operators have, again, every incentive to assure that they are providing a safe product, and to assure that their operation is, is running safely and not becoming a, a public safety threat. My second recommendation is this, staggering the first quarterly square tax payment to the end of the first fiscal quarter following the businesses establishing their operations, as opposed to, prior to the operations being established. It goes without being said that the city must recover the cost of implementation of this regulatory program, and draw revenue to at least cover the cost of continuing regulatory enforcement. However, until the businesses themselves are established and in operation, the upfront cost to the city would be limited to the processing of the applications for the regulatory permits, and these costs could be recovered by the collection of the regulatory permit fee. Following approval of these applications, every one of these prospective businesses would undergo tenant improvements to meet the specified needs for the operation, and many would be making substantial capital investments for the development of facilities from the ground up. These anticipated costs, coupled with the expense of property leases, deposits, and purchases of real estate while construction is ongoing, will be borne exclusively by the operators. By taxing the business for space utilized in its operation prior to the business becoming operational, this would create an unnecessary and unjustifiable cost impediment to the establishment of these businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Mayor, councilman, pleasure to meet you tonight. I want to thank you for getting the air conditioning working, for starters. My address is 1633 Westmore Lane, or Drive in Atwater. I've lived out here since 2005. Believe it or not, I intentionally moved here. I'm looking at the opportunity that presents itself for the city of Atwater from a purely business and economic purpose, perspective. I don't partake in any recreational activity. As a matter of fact, I don't even like going out in, in town that much. That lady that first spoke here tonight, that speaks volumes about the safety and welfare of the community here. It sincerely really does. My wife works for the DA's office. What was it, last week? They did a sweep, picked up 50 gang members. This is a weekly activity. All right. You know, it might not number 50, but it happens quite a bit. So, to that, to that note, you have a, an opportunity to fundamentally shift policy and government revenues and oversight to, to maintain the safety and welfare of the community. There's people out there that really want to legitimize transactions, and this gives you guys an opportunity to govern that. So, with that in mind, you really do need to, I'd like to see you approve dispensaries as part of the full business model that you guys have before you. And we'd like to also, the group that I've been working with would also like to see, I guess, an emergency ordinance, if at all possible. We, we first presented a business plan to you roughly six months ago. It's been a long time. I know it takes time to review stuff, but have you guys visited any dispensaries? I know it takes time to review stuff, but have you guys visited any dispensaries? Seen how they interact with the community? You know, I don't know. So I guess I really look forward to your expertise in producing a good policy for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Anyone else wishing to address?
Danny Hernandez, 1904 Canal, here in Atwater. It is imperative that any of these businesses for dispensing marijuana be denied. What's at risk is not the people that are grown up that use it, the people that are at risk are the kids in the schools. It doesn't make any difference whether the business is next door, a mile away, five miles away, all right? The statistics for Denver, Colorado are in. On January, on June of 2016, as adults legally smoked pot in Colorado, more minority kids arrested for it. Arrest rate went, 10, 17-year-olds, Latino and blacks, all right, rose more than 20% to 50%. Now, keep in mind of the community that we have here in Atwater. Just up and look at the people that are living here, the Latino population here is well over 50%. I don't know what the black population is at the present time, but we do have black residents, and we have plenty of kids of all nationalities here. At the present time, just recently, on two different occasions, we had gun issues at Eileen Coburn. Last week was one of them. At Buick High School, we had another gun issue where a gunman had to be chased around the campus, and they closed it down until this happened. In March 2017, this again is in Colorado, 16 people indicted in massive homegrown marijuana What just happened here about 10 days ago, Chief Joseph involved in the operation that he was involved in 10 days ago, they arrested 50 people here. Not necessarily off for marijuana issues, but the criminal element is in here. It's in this city, and if you want to protect the kids, you have to deny this business. There's just no way in the world that you can allow it to happen. You have a police department right now, you know, that is essentially undermanned. You're going to put these officers out there to deal with these issues when there are more important things that they can deal with if you do not allow this to go on. You're going to take up all their time chasing down individuals that are minors that are using, that they know damn well they can get it. If you go around town and you go to these stores, you know, these 7-Eleven stores, Circle K, whatever it is, you're going to see adults outside drinking beer, and you can't stop that. I've seen it happen, and I don't see anybody, you know, doing anything with it. That only tells me that the PD is too damn busy taking care of other crime, so they take advantage of it. We've had that same age of student at the high school level going into Save Mart, going into a store to take out booze. When they go in, there are 15, 20 guys at a time, what did Save Mart end up doing? They blocked off all the aisles. Let's get it straight here. Enabling, you know, this kind of business to a grown person is one thing. That grown person turns around and makes it available to kids, that's a whole different story. I don't have a damn problem with it because a lot of guys that went to NOM came back highly, you know, hung up on this stuff. And you still have individuals that are going to war, coming back the same. And I know doggone well, you know, hey, when somebody that doesn't have it all upstairs because they're so damn high, it's very easy for them to make a couple of bucks, you know, by giving it to some kid. While we don't have anything here for the students, you know, to get into like they did 60, 40 years ago, I tell you what, they're looking for other things to get involved in, and this isn't it. So I think you need to look at the crime, I think you need to look at the ability of your PD. We've got a hell of a good police department, given the size that it is, with 30,000 people that are coming in here to raise hell in this city for whatever reason. The lady that just spoke earlier to here, you know, that's exactly what the hell is going on. You got somebody that's probably all high, you know, beating the hell out of her car.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I'm sorry, but you've kind of run over your time a little bit there. I appreciate your comment.
Well, you know, I didn't see nobody else on any time, but I tell you what, my point is what I just told you.
Understand.
If you want to protect these kids, you better deny this business.
Frank Johnson, Modesto. I hear a lot of nays and yays. I'm not concerned whether you pass it or whether you don't pass it. The concern I have that I've not heard many cities at all bring up, and there's been many issues. Now, we know that the city, if it passes, will generate revenue. What other cities have failed to do was put revenue and set it aside and create code enforcement. When you have edibles and things of this nature, how are you going to monitor these dispensaries and enforce code on what they're selling? So is this going to be passed to the health department? Are you going to use the revenue to create your own code enforcement to inspect these places to make sure that what they're selling is exactly what they're saying it is as far as the chemical compound of what's in this edible food? So there's many factors that probably have not come across the table other than are the cities going to get revenue. Code enforcement cannot be put on the police department stretched as thin as it is. It's also a health issue. So can it be put on to the county health department to do the inspections of these edibles? And how many dispensaries are there? Or is this going to be an independent company? Or is it going to be sent out to a laboratory such as LabCorp or whatever the case may be? And who's going to encounter that cost? So I just throwing it out there that if you pass it, make sure that you set that revenue aside for code enforcement because if someone goes to one of these places and they buy something edible and die from an overdose, there's a problem, big problem. Thank you.
Mr. Robbins. Anyone else wishing to address this issue?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, for being here today and listening to the community speak about a very impassioned and important issue. I too am passionate about reforming the laws as they pertain to cannabis for a number of reasons. I'll start with the black market. How do we eliminate the black market? The black market thrives, especially thrives when they are the only place to go for these products. They have no competition from proper tax-paying businesses that give back to the community, give feedback to the community, are regulated. So the concern that the gentleman had about the black market is real, but how do we eliminate the black market? It's already there, and we have a ban in place, and it's only getting bigger. Well, my suggestion is to regulate, and that would eliminate people needing to grow at home, and these home grows that are getting raided. We would hope that those would be eliminated by allowing licensed grows where our local police department can go and check on things and make sure that things are safe for the employees and for the products that are being made. Colorado has experienced some homelessness coming to Colorado because of dispensaries being there, so they're looking at using some of the tax revenue, the incredible tax revenue, to solve that issue. How do we get rid of the gangs? Gangs are a constant problem. Well, we take away their source of revenue, and that could be one way. Regulation would help do that. Drug abuse, we could help the issue with drug abuse, which already exists for other types of drugs as well, by regulating the dispensaries, by making sure that they're playing above board, that they're educating the public as well on these products. Security, these dispensaries would have to hire security. By law, they'd have to hire security, and some of that security could be current local law enforcement looking for extra hours. But by law, for these dispensaries, licensed dispensaries to operate, they would have to hire security. So there's more jobs for our community. Revenue, we talked about revenue. The city needs revenue. Current local consumers already exist. They're not going to stop consuming cannabis, they're just simply consuming cannabis that they don't know where it came from, and most likely it's bought from the local black market or gangs. Dispensaries would be required to use track and trace. We would be able to track these products if they do end up at a high school with some kid overdosing or at an elementary school. We would be able to track exactly where it came from and hold these people accountable, fine them, strip them of their licenses, or somehow work with them to tighten their belt. Jobs, we need jobs in the Central Valley. You eliminate crime by creating jobs. People that are criminals don't necessarily have jobs, they're not causing crime because they don't have jobs. And research shows that when you have a job, you get some self-esteem. You want to get rid of a criminal, help him build his self-esteem. Dispensaries go hand-in-hand with deliveries. There's a lot of people out here that don't have a car, they're injured, they're sick. You have people that are very sick that need deliveries. I would encourage deliveries, regulate them. I would encourage the city to make sure that in your ordinance, you have the ability to draft development agreements with these operators so that you can select people that you want to work with and select people that you believe care about your community, aren't just here to make a buck and leave. Development agreements are important because it's an agreement between parties, not just an open-ended license. I don't know that guns have anything to do with medical marijuana or recreational marijuana. Apart from that, because it's unregulated, people have to protect themselves. Assuming the guards would have them at the dispensaries. In terms of veterans, a lot of our veterans are using cannabis to help treat their PTSD. I think the money could be used from these revenues to fund other recreational development projects for children. And the dispensaries, again, are important so that we can educate the citizens on what cannabis is and isn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this issue? Okay.
Mayor, have you thought what you just said?
No, I think we've heard what we've needed to hear for right now, Mr. Hernandez. Thanks. Okay, yeah, next time. Next item. I'm sorry, Mr. Vineyard?
Yeah, actually, I do have a comment. I wasn't here unfortunately at the meeting, this was first heard due to illness, nor could I make the CDRC meeting because I had a higher priority as far as I was concerned with the date night with my wife. What Mr. Hernandez said is true. The kids are getting marijuana. It's no secret, 45 years ago, when I was in high school, the kids were getting marijuana. They were coming to school high. We knew who they were. We knew who the dealers were. So it's not a new problem. It's an ongoing problem. The last initiative, the marijuana initiative, passed 68% in Atwater's jurisdiction. Now, I had a group of people approach me and said they felt it would be a great deal to have the manufacturing and a dispensary located within the manufacturing because it could be controlled better. And the person that talked to me said they knew this because they have people and have visited places where you have to go through a door, you have to be checked and screened before you can get to the next door. If you don't have the necessary ID or the card or anything else, you don't get past that next door because a guard will stop you. You get to the next door, that's where the product is. It's very concise, it's very neatly packaged. Other portions of the building you can't get into because you don't have the clearance for that. So they have very strict rules in Colorado is where this place was. People also talked about how if you have a dispensary, there's a possibility to have a safety fee or safety tax maybe included, so that that money could go to the police department to help for more officers, code enforcement, et cetera. These people have already thought about that. They also said that with that dispensary in there, they felt that we could require beefed-up security, better cameras, fencing, armed guards hired to the level of a police officer, trained to the level of a police officer. And the funny part about this, the group of people that came to me were our finest police department officers. They feel, some of them feel, it's a great deal to come here, to bring it. The money is outstanding. That's all they truly talked about, was how much money this city could make and how well we could develop the commercial business with the dispensary in it, and the crime rate, in their opinion, would not be increasing a significant amount. That's their opinion, of course. Don't have any studies for it, I don't. People talk about PTSDs for veterans. I'm going to tell you something, firefighters have PTSD, officers have PTSD, there's a lot of people that do. It's not just limited to a certain group. But to me, that just spoke volumes, you know? To me, I think we need to include the ability to allow a dispensary with inside the commercial building, which isn't marked, there's nothing outside that says, "Here we are, come get me, come smoke me." But we also need to limit dispensaries, which are already out there from my understanding in our city, and prevent them. So we have to change that ordinance to allow the dispensaries in the manufacturing part but prevent it outside it. It's a two-way thing you've got to do, but I was approached, I didn't go seeking anything. And I've had other people say the same thing. Why can't we get money? It's a $25 million business in some cases. Why can't we get some of that money for our city to make it healthy, to get the general fund back in balance, to go to the police department, to hire more officers, which everybody is screaming about all the time, to make this city safer? It's safe. No city can ever be as safe as you want it to, but I think this would help. Thank you.
Mr. Raymond?
I agree with Councilmember Vineyard, and I too have had the same. I agree with Councilmember Vineyard, and I too have had the same group of people, officers, come to me in support of this. And I just have a question for Mr. City Manager. I don't have the ordinance in front of me here. Does it still include the local track and trace that the police chief would have to?
Yeah, that, that's part of the state regulation. That's part of that aspect of it.
Okay, because there was, there was a clause in there that it was, would fall on Chief Joseph to write that up, and I just don't want to put that burden.
Right. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces, a lot still that that's uncertain, but I think that we can have ordinance that reflects those things, if it helps to buttress them, to kind of solidify it, but that's going to be part of the requirement in the state.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Creighton?
I just wanted to comment on the gentleman's statement about the PTSD by vets. I don't think you have your, your facts right, and I don't appreciate lumping those vets into that. There, there may be a few that use that, but not all vets use that, that have PTSD. And the main thing I want everybody to understand, you know, I hear emergency ordinance this, and we've got to hurry up and do that, we're going to make millions and trillions of dollars, but we can't let them come in and charge me anything because they've got to get up operational, but they're going to make trillions and millions of dollars on this. I'm just common sense listening to things here. Things aren't making sense. So, you know, they're, they're saying they need a break to come in, yet they're going to make millions and millions of dollars, and we're going to have all these great things for the PD. And, you know, I haven't been approached by anybody that's saying, "This is the greatest thing since sliced bread." I've been to a few facilities, didn't see any armed guards, I didn't see much security. I saw things that weren't the best thing in the world. I mean, pretty disappointed at what I saw. However, it is a free market, it is, it is the United States if the voters vote for this, but I want to make sure everybody's clear. This is a business deal for the city of Atwater, strictly. This is not about somebody's medical condition or anything else. This is the health and safety of Atwater. We could financially afford to do this, it'll sustain itself financially, and we do the right things. We don't rush into anything over this, no matter what it is, whether it's medical ordinance or anything else. So, I caution everyone, take heed and do your homework, because there's a lot more unanswered questions than are questions positive. Talk to Colorado. They do go there on vacation, and they don't leave, and now they have a homeless problem, they have other things. This will probably go. This is the new gold rush. But let's be the ones that are selling the shovels and the picks, not the ones out there digging, trying to do something stupid. That's all I've got to say.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comments or questions? Chief Joseph?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Can you get on a microphone right there?
This was a topic, when I was at the FBI Academy, a lot of, a lot of issues on this one was brought up by a lot of different agencies over there specifically for this issue. And, and they'll, I'm not one way or another on this, I'm not going to go in that discussion. However, the mistakes that a lot of cities have made, and then I, probably they can attest to it too, is this thing, it goes fast. Once you, once it's implemented, it speeds really quick. And if your city is not prepared for it initially, it could backfire on you and overtake you really quick. And that's what happens to a lot of cities. Not saying one way or another, maybe it works, maybe the money, the revenue, the purpose is, is, is maybe, you know, like you said, voters voted for it. However, from an enforcement, law enforcement point of view, the manpower is not available at the time. When this thing starts going, going on, it's not easy to, I mean, we might need another ten officers, we can barely hire one right now, two at a time. It's going to be very difficult sometimes to maintain it, so you've got to keep that in mind. Firefighters as well, fire department, issues in that, in that kind of stuff. You are going to have the marijuana, the growers in the regular houses, the gang members, that's not going to stop. You know that, and I know that. That's going to keep going. No, you know, but again, not saying one way or another, but we have to be prepared. What happens to these cities that are not prepared prior to implementing something like this is, is drastic failure. It can, it can backfire on you. Just keep that in mind. I'm just saying, money-wise, you have to be ready to go in, you know, before you, you know, maybe the great intent is that, but if you're not ready, if you don't have the manpower, the city manpower, for example, code enforcement, you know, you're going to need somebody like that out there to monitor. You're going to have to. And, but if you don't have the manpower for it, I'm just saying, you know, keep that in mind, because that was one big issue they were having discussions and debates over there about that specific issue. And like I said, you're going to have issues around the hazmat portion of it, the pesticides, the, the issues involving the chemicals used, how, you know, I don't know how, to be honest with you, I really haven't done much research on how you guys, you know, police yourselves or police that portion of it, how the state is going to do that. But on the flip side of it, those are issues of concern too, you know. Where is it going to be at? Is it going to be near schools? Is it going to be, you know, near places like that? I mean, home, I mean, the invasions of these, of these particular areas and that kind of stuff, are the gang members going to come try to tax things? I don't know. You know, that's, that's up to the, that's up to the, how it's going to be run and how the, how the mob wants to do it. But the point being is, where the city is not prepared prior, we're going to be in a little bit of trouble. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. I'm not going to make any long speeches here or anything else. I've made my views and what have you, if that's a matter of public record. I think there's been a lot of discussion here. They focus a lot around the revenue generation of this whole thing, and I heard it tonight as well, you know, talking about the tax. Well, we don't get any tax from this. If we were to implement this today, we wouldn't get a dime of tax. That would all go to the state of California, because we have not implemented a tax plan here for the sale of marijuana. What that would entail would be a 218 process, which would mean this is a new tax, and it would have to go to the voters for approval. And we're, we're not approaching it under that at this point. What we're doing is looking at this from a fee structure, and that's, that's the bottom line. So, we're, we're, you know, there's been a lot of misconceptions about this stuff. Finally, I'm just going to say again, you know, we keep calling, you know, all this stuff, and maybe it's the new terminology for the product, I don't know, but we keep calling it dispensaries, they're, they're stores, they're retail outlets. Let's, let's be honest, this is Prop 64 stuff now. We're not talking about, you know, 215 cardholders. That's, that's a different aspect of this whole thing. So, let's, let's just kind of focus on just where this is going. This is a commercial product. This is, you know, just like, you know, selling snow cones out on, you know, someplace maybe or something like that. But the point being is, is that, you know, this, this whole, this whole thing, the way we're, we're approaching this right here, we're not going to make emergency, you know, ordinances, we're not going to make emergency thises and that's. We're going to do this thing, as I think Mr. Creighton alluded to, we're going to do this right. And if it takes a while to do it, then that's what we're going to do. But we're not going to rush into anything. And I think there's, you know, case study enough, and I think Chief Joseph has alluded to some of that, where for those that didn't do things properly, they paid a price for it. You know, and there are health aspects to this. Now, I, you know, I know, I'm, I'm going to, you know, catch a lot of flak from some of the folks that are here tonight. But the one thing that I did read about chronic users of marijuana is, is that there is a thing, and it's, the acronym for it is CRS, and you can develop whatever you think that stands for. But the thing of it is, is that this is a condition that they, that a chronic user presents to a emergency room with very, you know, distinct respiratory issues. A lot of it looks like a bad flu or whatever, but, but they're inundating emergency rooms. Yeah, that's, that's documented factor, you know, throughout Colorado. So, these are things, you know, that we have to, you know, it's not just for our community, it's the community as a whole, you know, because we've only got one hospital here, guys, and let me tell you, you know, that emergency room doesn't get any better. It, it, you know, it, it's overwhelmed. So, let's, let's kind of keep that in mind, you know. There's a lot of other things that are involved in this whole thing, and we're going to do it right. And I'm certainly under the belief that the city of Merced and the county of Merced as a whole is going to approach this thing and do it in a very sensible and very methodic way, and ensure that we have exactly what we want to have in place, and that we don't, we don't screw it up. You know, there's a lot of people out here that we represent, and we're going to make sure that this is right. And we're going to listen to all the concerns from everybody, right up until the time that we take the vote. And I am not going to, I'm not going to, you know, just rush into this thing on my own. I want to have all the information on this, because our community depends on it. So, that's all I have to say on that matter. Next item.
Public hearings, waiving the first reading and introducing ordinance number CS 983 approving sales tax revenue sharing between the city of Atwater and the county of Merced.
Mr. McBride?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. As you're aware, you recently provided approval for property tax sharing agreement with Merced County, and it's one of the conditions of that stated in the agreement that we were to be addressing the issue of sales tax. As you know, under the property tax agreement, we reallocated the share that we have with Merced County. Currently on sales tax, we're not sharing any of what's called the 1% Bradley Burns. However, lost balance in Merced are. And with that in mind, the county has asked for us to take action on a proposed ordinance, which is in your packet tonight for consideration. That would basically share 5% of that 1% amount. And we've pointed out through, you know, present, or through some, some documentation in your packet, that this would result in a net benefit to the city. This would be foregoing what's called the per capita fee. That's a fee of 5842 that we, we pay each fiscal year to the county for a population above 25,000. So, even though you're giving up some of the sales tax, you're benefiting from the loss of that per capita fee. And so, we tried to project that out over a few years to kind of show what the benefit would be. It's a very straightforward, very simple ordinance. It's been reviewed by the county. They've also been in contact with the Board of Equalization. The way it will work is, once it's into effect, the county picks up your, your allocation comes directly from the state. We don't have to remit any payment to them. And it would be in effect until such time as we either, the county and us jointly amend it or, or change it. But again, this has been something that's been in effect for many years for most of the agencies. It was a requirement that we had in 2002 under our prior property tax agreement, but it was never initiated, was never recorded, and never occurred. And so, this would more or less wrap up the issues we had with the tax sharing with the county, and this would allow us to move forward, so that we can, when it's adopted, formally execute the property tax sharing agreement, and that's going to have a benefit to us in the, you know, in the future, as we've previously discussed. So, I'd be happy to answer your questions that you might have tonight.
Are there any questions any of the council members may have for Mr. McBride?
Motion to approve.
Hold on, hold on. We have a public meeting. If there's no questions from the council, we'll open up the public hearing, much to the chagrin of Mr. Creighton, but.
It's been a long time coming.
I understand. I'm just as anxious to go and vote as well. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this matter on public hearing? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is White Marks. I just spoke. Thank you for allowing me to speak again. When it comes to taxes and revenue sharing, I just want to say, in this particular case and in any other case, you can create a revenue source through a development agreement, so you don't have to wait for a vote. You can create a development agreement, which both parties agree to pay a certain amount of their revenue, or, I apologize, both parties agree.
That has nothing to do with this item.
Well, it does have to do with this item, actually.
You're speaking about the marijuana ordinance.
I'm not, I didn't use the word marijuana.
Well, it's a little allowing to speak. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. And so, so that, whether it be this particular revenue sharing agreement or any other, you can do it through a development agreement, and you can modify it through a development agreement. This is a great way to not have to wait to change things in a vote, is simply through a development agreement. The parties can agree that a certain person will pay a certain amount moving forward. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Supervisor McDaniel?
Supervisor McDaniel, I'm here in Atwater. I just want to say, this revenue agreement is a perfect example of staff working with staff, and keeping us electeds out of it, and actually putting something together to create a policy that we can bring forward to each of our governing bodies to agree on. And I'd like to commend Mr. McBride on, on his efforts in putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item under public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the council.
I'll second the motion.
Well, we've got to have the first.
He just had it. You got it before you come out comments.
Okay. Yeah, I know. Well, where, where did I lose it anyway?
Your stress is cut out.
I know, I know. Okay. Okay, Mr. Creighton placed a motion, and, okay. I'm glad somebody did. Okay, call for the question.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item, approving the amended fifth cycle housing element update and authorizing submittal of the approved housing element to the Department of Housing and Community Development for certification.
Mr. McBride?
Mayor, Council, this item was before you almost a year ago. We basically had a fairly comprehensive draft document that we felt was, was needed. Everything in it was ready to go for approval by the state. They reviewed it on several different occasions, suggested changes, and so with the help of Mr. Richard James here tonight from EMC Planning, what you see in your packet is basically the final version that is, that is acceptable by the state. Richard's going to be here tonight to kind of walk you through what some of the requested changes were, and what the intent is for the document, and then we can answer any questions from there.
Okay. Any questions so far? Okay, Richard, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Price and councilmembers. The version that came to you last year that you approved had responded to the latest HCD comments, Housing and Community Development in Sacramento. We thought that was going to be good enough for them. They reviewed it for their certification and came back to us with additional changes they'd like to see. Actually went through, I think, three different rounds with them. Each round takes two to three months, because they're allowed two months to look at it before they get back to us. So, basically, there were a number of issues, but they've really focused on proving that the city had enough zoning to accommodate affordable housing, and they really kind of focused in on the R2 zone, which doesn't account for all that many units in the future. The mobile home zone, they wanted quite a bit of additional proof that mobile homes could be affordably provided, and that that zone district would count for the particular classes of affordability that we presented it as. So, we went through, as I said, a bunch of different rounds with them, focused also on city processes. They wanted a lot more information on the city's planned development and CUP ordinance provisions and procedures, to prove that those weren't a burden on providing affordable housing. We looked at, took a second look at vacant and underutilized parcels. We provided notation in our sites list as to which ones were adjacent, so those could potentially be consolidated to be more suitable for affordable housing. And cost of construction, they wanted a little more detail on how much it would cost to construct houses. It all resulted in changes to programs, two new programs, and a number of changes to existing programs. Most of the changes to the existing programs had to do with clarifications, timeframes, that sort of thing, nothing too substantive. And then, the two new programs had to do with rezoning a parcel 10 acres on Buick Road across from Castle Gardens, a program to rezone to high density. High-density residential is automatically considered an affordable housing type. As it turned out, or as it happened, there was an application already into the community development department for a 10-acre site to rezone to high density. It got held up due to some personal issues with the applicant, but they are still on track to do that eventually, and it's been incorporated as a program in the housing element. And the other, the other program we added had to do with mobile home parks, some incentives to make construction of mobile home parks a little more affordable, parking changes, particularly for single-wide, reducing the width of driveways, which are currently wide enough to allow two-way traffic plus parking each side, and then an incentive to consolidate the three mobile home park sites that are not built on Crest Road. That pretty much sums up the major changes. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from the council? The only one I, just for clarification for the public pertaining to mobile home parks, could you just define the state's regulatory commitment to that, and what are, as a city, what we are obligated to?
Yeah, mobile home park approvals are, come under state jurisdiction, so they are approved at state level. But the city does have development standards that they can put in place as to, you know, the width of a roadway, for example, the setback from the property line, that type of thing. So, there's a minor role locally.
Right. Well, that, that was my one concern when I heard this presentation at the CDRC was this. Well, that was my one concern when I heard this presentation at the CDRC was the width, you know, because it is, you know, anybody that's been in a mobile home park, you know, you can see that where, you know, the roads are narrow. To get something like our ladder truck that we have going out on calls, to try to navigate through a very narrow street in a mobile home park along with any cars that would be parked on either side of that roadway would be pretty tough to navigate through. So thank you for finding, you know, what each other's responsibility. Mr. McBride.
Yeah, Mayor, maybe I can add to what Richard mentioned in the conversation. Yeah, this doesn't, the adoption of housing element does not exempt anyone from following our codes or our processes for housing development. Really, the fundamental purpose of this is to ensure that we've reviewed our needs regionally, and we've got a plan that says you have enough area to accommodate those. And that's pretty much the extent of it. Beyond that, it falls upon the same processes for how we review projects, what those are. This is just about ensuring that we've reviewed the need for housing and we have enough area to accommodate for it. The other thing I would point out, and Mayor, I know you attended, the commission did review this, they did recommend your approval of it tonight. And so with that, we'd like to perhaps open the public hearing, get testimony, and then take action from there.
Will do. Okay, this is a public hearing at this point. Anyone who wishes to speak to the housing element, please step over to the podium, state your name for the record.
Helen Amran, 4860 Co. Rowan.
10 acres you are referring to on Buick and across from, wasn't that a food for shopping center?
No. You're, this is the area that is adjacent to Veterans Park, right behind, you know, where there's a football field or whatever right there. This is the, as you're, as you're heading towards Green Sands, it'll be on the left.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, seeing no one else coming forward, close the public hearing. Mr. Vineyard.
Motion to approve resolution number 2953-17.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Vieira.
Yes.
Your light came on.
Yeah.
Whatever.
I thought you were calling for the question.
No. But being as though you mentioned that, yes, call for the question.
Raymond.
Yes.
Since I already have Ms. Vieira's answer, I will continue on. Vineyard?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Reports and presentation from staff, verbal report regarding Federal Bureau of Investigation training, Police Chief Joseph.
Thank you. This is, I'll make this brief. I know everyone's kind of tired. Went through the train. Again, thank you to the council for allowing me to go to the train, and thank you for the police department itself that was, held itself together. They did very well. And also Chief Chavez and Lieutenant Soria for assisting on the police department. I'll answer any questions, too, if you guys have any questions. Training was great. A lot of the issues that you guys discussed and all the training I received, for example, one of my classes was advanced psychology profiling, and it gave me how to deal with politicians, it gave me how to deal with outside people, it gave me, it gave us tips on legal tips, and it gave us a bunch of analysis, how to profile people and how to do stuff like that. And also gave me assistance on how to hire people the next generation, for example, the millennium generation, how to bring people here, how to keep people in your organization and for the future, and that kind of stuff. The terrorist-type hostage negotiations, how to prepare for that kind of stuff that's inevitable, which is going to be occurring, you know, happen, you know, and today, you guys know what happened with the terrorist act today in the concert. These things are going to start happening everywhere, and that's what kind of prepared us for that kind of stuff, too, for cities, what to do, how to prepare, who to contact if we need somebody. It's a great asset. The physical aspect of it, one of the things is I went in at 2:13, came out at 1:93, I'm back up now 2:06, thank God. Came back a little bit, thanks to Jan's Bakery. But that was great. One of the biggest things they did over there, what you have to accomplish, everybody accomplishing, it's called the Yellow Book Road. So this is my Yellow Book Road, my class number is 267. So this is the Yellow Book Road, and what you do is when you run, it's 6.1 miles of, it's the Marine Corps base area of Quantico, and I would not want to do it again, to be honest with you. It's not a nature drive, it was pretty hard. We had people on there, broke their legs, broke their arms doing it. One guy broke his ribs, had to be medicalled out, metaflighted out. You get, that's the way you go when you do this kind of stuff. But it was, that was, that was a big asset. And I think the biggest thing I received from there is the connections between all the various 220 different officers that were there. And we still contact each other all the time. I go through, present, we deal with policies, we talk to one another via 90% emails, and it helps out a lot, too. So like I said, for the department itself is a great asset. There's a couple of other people in this county are going to be going, like I said, Chief Chavez, Soria went. Chief Chavez came to my graduation, actually flew down there, came to my graduation, went out to dinner with my family and everything, which was pretty cool. And that's it. Any questions, I'd like to answer questions.
Any questions for Chief Joseph? You be, can you allude to the benefit of your attending this and how it can translate to grant funding, federal funding?
Yeah, there was, there was a, the legal, the legal update class, one of the classes you have, it kind of teaches you how to do grants, grant studies and stuff. And I give a lot of my information to Lori Waterman, who does our grants, give her some connections, and I was talking to actually, actually Mr. Paul Creighton about some of the stuff on that one. It helps in that perspective and how to look for grants federally and what you need for those specific grants in that I didn't know prior to this. And tips on how to do it, like I said, gave some of the information to Ms. Waterman, and I'm going to continue, just some more information I have to get, I just got to go in my, honestly, my briefcase, the back of my stuff and go through that whole file, I mean, it's pretty thick.
Okay.
It's a benefit.
Mr. Creighton.
Thank you, and congratulations on your graduation over there.
Thank you.
On our trip back to Washington DC on One Voice, Supervisor McDaniel and Councilman Raymond and I went back there, we had the privilege to meet with DOJ, and they recommended that we do a, the council submit a resolution for the PD when Waterman does our grants, that we will work with the DOJ and other federal agencies that would bolster our ability to get higher grant funding. So I'd like to get that on the next city council agenda.
One thing I will say real quick, Mayor, if you don't mind us on, forget us to put the honor, I saw a lot of stuff, went to New York, went to Philadelphia, went to, traveled all through Washington, and I knew Washington inside and out, unfortunately. Almost got hit by the Vice President a few times in his car, because he always held up traffic as he drove by. But the issue I had, I went to the Marine Corps Museum in Virginia, and if none of you have ever been there, if you ever want to go see something of history, out of all the things I saw over there, I went there twice, was able to go one more time, got a ride over there, and it's an all-day affair. If you ever go down there, it's an experience like, it's like none other. If you want to know, if you want to know a history, and I've always respected the military and I've always respected the Marine Corps, but beyond respect and stuff. And we also saw secret helicopters that protect the President, which was pretty cool. I can't say anymore about that. And, you know, it was really, it was really good, so it was really interesting.
Very good. All right. Any other further questions or comments?
I just want to back up in a statement about almost getting hit by the Vice President. Raymond and I were at the Capitol, and I almost got ran over by the Vice President also. He does move quite quickly.
And that's, they'll keep, they'll keep trying.
Yep.
Okay. All right, on that happy note, next item.
Verbal report regarding weed abatement.
Chief Schmitz.
Mayor, city council, citizens, wanted to give you guys an update on something that's probably forefront in all of our minds, because we're seeing a lot of weeds out there, we got a lot of rain. So it's something that we're concerned with, with the fire department. I gave to the council a packet that basically gave numbers from last week. The numbers were 163 homes that have been written up for weed abatement. Some of those have already been taken care of. Those notices are going out last week, this week, and they'll continue until we've got them all out. Each one gets a certified mail. They have a time to basically respond, they've got the letter, and then they have also a time to basically clear. The code enforcement officer is also working in concert with us. Basically, he's done at least 20 from last week. I know he's got a few more actually this week alone. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys are in the know that we're working towards compliance. That's what we want to get. We want to make sure that people understand that we're out there to help, help them to get their stuff done. We're not out there to cite. We want to make sure that we're working with the public to get their clearances, because that will help the greater community.
Very good. Mr. Vineyard.
Thanks, Chief, for the report. I just got some concerns. Fire season's out there already. Fresno Kings, Fresno areas had hit by fires, they've had engines come all the way from Eureka, that area down to Riverside, due to the nature of the beast, the dry grass and the winds. And looking around the city, I think you're doing a great job doing this. I personally, if we could look at the schedule to start it a month earlier next year, and I know it all depends on weather.
But you are correct.
Yeah, because you're, I'm just looking at your thing here, is we give them three to four weeks to clear, that's three to four weeks more danger. And if we can get those things cleared, maybe just a little sooner before they dry and work on that, that would be greatly appreciated. But that's, only if it works in the schedule to do.
Thank you for your input.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other comments for Chief Schmidt? Okay, thank you. Next item.
City council matters, discussion regarding fiscal year 2017-2018 budget workshops.
Mr. McBride, dates for prospective workshops?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember, our purpose tonight was to kind of verify these dates with the council, make sure that it works. Obviously, you got an update tonight from the Finance Director, and we'd like to do this perhaps on, you know, could, I don't, I doubt it would be done in one day. It's possible, but we wanted to kind of go through it, and so you have some more opportunity for input discussion before we have the council meeting on the 12th. And so tentatively, we're looking at perhaps the 30th or 31st. Start time really flexible up to you. We just wanted to throw those out and get consensus if we could get those agendas for the workshops.
Anybody have heartburn on either one of those days? Mr. Creighton.
Ms. LaQuinner said about the enterprise funds, there was a question about that. Would that be addressed before we go to the workshops so that we don't have to wait again for those answers to be resolved?
There's lady to ask.
You mean that issue with the attorney?
Yes.
We can discuss that before the workshops.
Because if we can have that resolved, Scott, one way or another, so that we don't, if we don't need to attend it because we don't have it resolved, that would, okay. That's my concern.
Okay, so 30th or 31st?
Good with me, long as it's not like 6:30 in the morning.
That's too early.
Like six, six o'clock? Yeah. Would that work? Just have it at a regular time?
It's up to you.
Six o'clock is, works better for me. Is that good?
Should be fine.
On which day? 30th or 31st?
Why don't we just wait till, do we have to set a date right now?
Trying.
Why don't we schedule the 30th and set it for six, and then see how we go?
That's, that's fine for me.
If we need more than one day, then we could talk about it that night.
Okay. Okay, so six o'clock on the 30th budgetary workshop here in the council chambers, and the public is always invited. Okay? Okay.
City council comments.
Mr. Raymond.
Mr. Ferretta, I've known you since I was probably eight years old, Pat, and you've given your life to this city, more importantly, to the kids. You shaped, you helped shape a lot, a lot of kids, gave them a place to go when they had nowhere to go, be it drop-in or sports. You know, I'm the product of that as well. You even, outside of construction and umpiring, gave me my first job. So I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for your service and wish you all the best, sir.
Ms. Vieira.
Yes, I'd also like to piggyback on that and say congratulations on your retirement. I know that all of my boys going through Little League, you were definitely a constant down there, and all my family's benefited from it. I know when my husband speaks of you, he speaks very highly of you and says that you're just a really neat guy, and that you are such a compliment to the Little League program. So thank you again for the influence on my children and my family, and I wish you all the best.
Mr. Vineyard.
Can't add a whole lot more to what they've said, obviously, and what other people have said tonight. I value the friendship that we've developed. I give my condolences, though, because you're going to be busier now than you were when you're working, if that's the way retirement goes. But I hope you safe trips, and I hope things go well for you.
Mr. Creighton.
I, too, want to thank Patrick, known him a long time, and my family uses his recreation programs, and we're going to miss you, and I hope that you can get on some golf courses up there in the snow.
Well, I don't want to be left out of this whole thing. You know, when I took the seat that I'm in right now, one of the guys that's really been helpful in and instrumental in, you know, providing information to make my job easier here, if that's at all possible, but is Patrick. He comes with a wealth of information that has always helped in how we conduct the city's business. I remember a time back, geez, I want to say 2010 or 11, you know, when the city was starting to get short on dollars and what have you, and there was a lot of talk about eliminating him and his position. And there was a real groundswell of support for Patrick from the people that worked for him and the community at large. And that really speaks to the character and to the ethics of this gentleman. And it's been a real, it's been a real pleasure to have you onboard. You've helped to make my job easier here. And you have benefited the city for a very long time, and we, all of us, this city owes a debt of gratitude to you for that. And I appreciate what you've done for me and for the city. Best of luck in Montana. And as I told you the other day, coming out of the office out here, you do know that it snows up there a lot. It gets cold. So, yeah, I understand. Best of luck, Patrick, in your future endeavors, and to your family. Your most welcome. You're welcome. Mr. Vineyard.
Yeah, I do have a couple more things. I didn't want to interrupt the Patrick train. So, but I know how long grants take. I'd like to set in motion possibly looking at grants for either adding two additional CSO positions or what I refer to as a meter officer, otherwise known as a meter maid, but it shouldn't be called that anymore, to enforce basically Atwater municipal codes and the vehicle codes within the city. They can do expired registration, illegal parking, handicap parking spaces, non-operational vehicles, et cetera, in addition to code enforcement. To me, that would free up the police officers and the code enforcement officers to do things that are more pertinent or more, have a higher priority. We wouldn't have to buy vehicles for them, we obviously have vehicles in the fleet. Merced alone has two meter officers that have made the city $380,000 in one year. Now, obviously, we're smaller, and I'm not saying, you know, go out there and go, you know, go wild, but it's another revenue source, and it can pay for that, those positions as well. My preference, I talked to a few people, would be the CSOs, because they have the ability to tow vehicles, if a vehicle needs to be towed where a meter officer doesn't. And so I would like to start that grant process. Neighborhood watch, we have a new one on Olive Avenue, not because of me, but because of volunteer Joan Fall, the Crestview Estates Neighborhood Watch and the Herman Neighborhood Watch, they, they're branching out, that area of the city is branching out, they're taking back their city, they're adding community pride. And I'm hoping that, they can keep that flame going and keep it moving throughout the city. And then one other thing, we have some new radar trailers, thanks to a grant. Chief, can you update us on the cost of that and what, with the right now?
Sure. This was a. Recently, with Mr. Vineyard's assistance, the volunteer, Lori Waterman, we went and got some, with some grants, she does a marvelous job, she's really knows her stuff. And we ended up getting two new radar trailers, came out the back, I think, $14,000, $14,000. And Mr. Vineyard came out as a volunteer and came out and put them together and takes them out every day and brings them back every morning to the thing. And that has reduced our accidents quite a bit already. I mean, accidents have already been reduced, but our accident rate has been reduced even[1798.73] I mean, accidents have already been reduced, but our accident rate has been reduced even further with these, and they, they're putting them all over the state, so now we have four operational radar trailers that, for, since I've been a police officer, we barely had one that worked for years, and so this has been very beneficial.
Thanks, Chief. Mr. Creighton?
Just something real quick, housekeeping. I went to the CDRC meeting with you this week, and a gentleman left, and he tried to leave out of that door, that door, and that door with no avail until he finally hit that door. So I think we need to mark those, maybe get with a mark and put the appropriate signage that it's only that one door there.
Like, like the one that says exit?
Well, it says it way up there, but if you start pushing on all these doors, then they don't work, so.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, real quick, I, I wanted to put out a big thanks to Sheriff Vern Warnke. As you all know, here, a week or so ago, we had a rather large law enforcement operation that it essentially went from Planata all the way to Oakdale and all points in between. So it wasn't just here, it was, it was all over the place, and as Chief alluded to, you know, that type of thing unfortunately is just something that just keeps on keeping on. But it's, it's really good to see that we have the law enforcement officers, whether they're sheriff or whoever they are, that can take these things and, and make them right. And boy, the, the guns that came off the street, 21,000 rounds of ammunition, quarter of a million dollars or so in cash, a whole bunch of meth, this, this was a really good operation. So congratulations to Sheriff Warnke and all the other officers, including our own, that were involved in this rather huge operation. Again, 4th of July, please, if you have a couple of bucks extra, see about giving it over to the 4th of July committee. Not a dime of city money goes into making that happen, and it's, it's a huge celebration, you know, for the birth of our nation, so please, you know, think about putting a little bit of money aside for that. Also had the pleasure this last week, along with Councilman Raymond, where we were able to meet a gentleman, John Cox, who is the, looks like the front rudder candidate for governor of the state. Interesting man and has a very interesting plan for what is known as neighborhood legislation. Pay attention to that one. That's, that's going to be an interesting race in 2018. I wish that Gary Bryce was still here. He has put out a request to help in funding kids that are involved in the police program, you know, for the police cadets. A lot of these kids are coming from homes that are not, you know, very well financially set up, and so a lot of these kids, they want to participate, but funds for uniforms and what have you is, is kind of lacking. So if you can give some insight into what can be done, how you might be able to help, please get together with Gary and let him know that you would like to help out with that, and let's, let's go ahead and do something nice for these kids. We were able to take them all out when the Air Force was here and give them a tour on one of the KC-135s out there, and it was a very good crowd of kids, they're all very well behaved, good, good kids, and you know, that's the kind that you want, you know, growing up in a community here. Lastly, I wanted to make mention, for those that know him, there's a guy, he is really an icon in the community and the music world here, Rudy Moreno. And for those that know Rudy, they know that he had a rather severe fall and has a pretty severe head injury. He's been in and out of the hospital, and now he's at home, and it, he, he needs literally 24-hour care. Their funding can only go so far. There is a GoFundMe for Rudy Moreno, and if you have a few bucks extra that you can donate to help to care for this guy. Rudy is a really just, just a super gentleman and a great jazz musician and a good friend, and I, I just hope the best for him and Cindy and Greg and the whole family, that, that he comes out on top of this whole thing. And with that, that's pretty much about it. If anybody has any final thoughts? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming here tonight. Thank you at home for watching, and we'll see you in two weeks. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.